The Monday, February 10th, 2020 meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Lorenzer?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Commissioners, we have one member absent from the meeting tonight. Do we have a motion to excuse? Commissioner Lorenzer?
I'll make the motion to excuse Mayor Smith. She's on maternity leave.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second to motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries six zero. On announcements tonight, as we had previously up on the screen, we have 11 vacancies, 11 committees that currently have vacancies, including one we're going to learn about tonight. So if you're interested in what you all hear about the Harbor Advisory Committee or any of the other committees that do have vacancies, we'd love to have you join us. Please see the city website for more information. Our first agenda item tonight is to welcome four new members to the Ad-Hoc Housing Committee. If the four, Anthony Adan, Bob Chapman, Stephanie Jones, and Dennis Smith, could please meet me at the podium on the side.
But I have, so I have the official pen for the City of Marquette. Thank you. Oops. There you go. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming, stepping forward and taking part in having a conversation about this really important topic and controversy. And our clerk is here now.
Bounce around. All right.
You're going to approve the agenda.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Ad-Hoc Housing Committee of the City of Marquette according to the best of my ability. Thank you. So if you want to sign these, I've signed. You sign a top copy and then sign this copy just around.
You want both copies sent?
Yeah. And then you can take the top one here.
Thank you. That's a drink. Thank you. 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 In my eagerness to get those folks sworn in and get them to work on fixing our housing, I skipped right over the approval of the agenda. Small item there. Sorry about that. So Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Bonzal?
A move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All in favor, say no. Or all opposed, say no. Motion passes six zero. All right. Moving on now, we come to the public comment portion. We do have two public comment portions of the regular agenda tonight. Public comments are not to exceed three minutes per person, and please clearly state your name and physical address when, as you begin your public comments. Also, please note that the Commissioners cannot immediately respond to public comments. Our chance to do so is at the end of the meeting, at the very end of the meeting, during our Commissioner comments. We also have a public hearing tonight. It'll be item number four on the agenda. During that time, folks will just come forward to the podium and be recognized and again state your name and address if you have not already spoken. You do not need to reserve time for the public hearing at this beginning public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to make public comment right now?
Terry Doyle, 1001 Alawes Road, Marquette, Michigan. And I would like to protest the exclusion of Union Grill from the marijuana district. We feel it's unfair. It's a very commercial facility. A, we were zoned out of a business general into a multifamily use or mixed use. We feel that that was unfair. There were only three properties that were zoned out of that. They were downgraded in their zonings. It was ours, Coco's, and then by, down by Grove Street. Very small parcels. I think those parcels should be reverted back to commercial and, because we've played, for 17 years, we've paid taxes on general business property. And then all of a sudden, we're exempt, or we're taken away from that criteria. So we feel that is very unfair. Either that, or we need to go over to mixed use, where you can sell and be a mixed use on the marijuana map. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment at this time?
Frank Jepero, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Overall, our maintenance crews performed wonderfully. However, a city official recently complained of damage that sidewalk plowing causes to our machines. Only a few snowfalls later, a street plow rolled much too fast down the length of East Ridge Street, throwing chunks of snow the full width of the sidewalk. The sidewalk resembled a boulder field with chunks up to eight inches in diameter. Uncharacteristic of Marquette winters, temperatures remained mild long enough for the sidewalk plow to pass safely the next day. Had those chunks frozen solid, components would have snapped. The point is that once the mechanical issue was reported, the manager needed to inform the superintendent so to better coordinate our street and sidewalk plowing. We can then minimize the depreciation of our street plows. This is why the manager ought to attend our meetings. If he did, he'd notice important concerns and pass them down accordingly, in this case to prevent street plows from fighting against our sidewalk plows. All department heads ought to attend our meetings as well. Another issue with our manager is his continued refusal to provide close-ups on our videos. He's literally used faulty equipment as an excuse. Is our equipment still not functioning properly? Three meetings ago, I spoke to the operator in the control room, who said they'd be provided, and still few close-ups over the course of years. Isn't it true that he hears our meetings through headphones? How can he bear years of criticism and do nothing about it? And that is close-ups of our members. Maybe there's a reason. The problem is, we don't know, because prudent responses from this board are seldom offered. Not one member seems to care about the quality of our public record. Not one member has provided us the requested update on glass recycling, as thousands of bottles continue to consume our landfill. Not one member has updated us on either power plant. Not one member has provided us the requested update on our so-called Advocate in Lansing. For years, we lacked responses on Lighthouse Park, as the feds took advantage of us. To date, no one's shown the decency to arrange the requested update on the tombolo. They were content letting a citizen do their job for them, only to learn that in the years since the presentation, zip, zilch, nada had been done. No one advocated for us locally or in Lansing. There's a video about a small island nation that's flooding. For years, a man has shored up his property with dead coral. What's too evident is that more has been done to save one man's parcel in a fourth-world country than this board has done to save one of the finest urban beaches in the United States of America. More done for one man's property than a city of 22,000 people, thousands of whom cherish that beach. One man's property. Now, pardon the drama, but the consequences of this board's negligence have risen beyond belief.
Anyone else for public comment at this time? Thank you. Public comment is now closed. All right. Next up, we will have two presentations this evening. The first presentation is an update on the Innovation Marquette Smart Zones Digital Economy Initiative from Rachel Barra. Rachel Barra is the Innovation Marquette Smart Zones Program Manager. Can you go ahead and come up to the podium? We will have questions from the Commissioners when she's completed her presentation.
Okay. Thank you. As said, I'm Rachel Barra. I'm the Program Manager at Innovate Marquette Smart Zone here in Marquette. And I'm going to just share a little bit with you about what we're working on with our new economy initiative, new digital tech sector initiative. And so what we're really trying to do with this is help Marquette become a small-town technology leader. We started this process last fall, and we started looking at what we've done so far, what we could look to do to improve. And we've gone around to different smart zones around the state, other economic development organizations, also even beyond the state, region-wide, and even internationally at times, to really learn about best practices and ways that we can improve going forward in our next 10 years of operation. Through this work, we actually partnered with Lucid Coast, which is a local startup company, and Keith London, owner of that, is here with me tonight. And we found out about an awesome grant opportunity with the Center on Rural Innovation. And so the Center on Rural Innovation is a nonprofit that's developed to help other small towns around the country that are strategically, have the opportunity to grow their digital tech economies, to improve their ecosystems and their economic vitality. We were actually selected out of 110 applicants to be in the top 10 of this year's Rural Innovation Initiative cohort. And what this means is that we're actually getting technical assistance. So we didn't receive any funding, but we're getting direct help from this nonprofit to help us really strategize on what we're going to do going forward to improve our tech sector here in Marquette. Beyond that, we were selected into a further smaller cohort of five to apply for an EDA I-6 grant application this April. And so what that grant would possibly do is help us expand our entrepreneurial services, both here in Marquette and around the UP, to better help grow our entrepreneurial ecosystem and support startups that could help grow our economic vitality. The notice of funding is not out yet. It should be out any day now. But once this happens, we'll be working with the Cory team to put together a strong application with the opportunity to apply for up to $1.5 million to expand educational programming, business support and consulting, and possibly also launch a digital technology accelerator here in Marquette. What we're really hoping also from this meeting tonight is to have a designated commission focal point. Is there someone that we could work with at the city that would be like our go-to point person as we go forward with this grant application? Whether we have, ask about a letter of support, or if we want to know which group that we should, which, I'm sorry, I don't know the correct term for it, but if there's a particular suborganization that we should be working with that might be around a particular issue that we're looking at, and we're really hoping we might be able to find someone or that you'd consider assigning someone to work with us on that. And if I could let Keith, Keith, do you have anything to add at all to?
I think you covered it really well, and especially the closing point. You know, there's been a lot of great work that's going on, kind of quietly. I know some of you have been plugged into it, and Mr. Simpson is part of the LDFA Board, and you've represented some of the, some of the city's interests in our meetings. But we're getting to a point here where the original point of this work has now grown, as you can see, into a much bigger, oh, sorry, a much bigger potential opportunity with this award of technical assistance and with the focus of the EDA. In fact, we've got an EDA representative, Doug Linott, with us here tonight, and he's going to be spending some time with us this week to look at how the intersection between this EDA opportunity and other issues that we're facing, like affordable housing, and like childcare, and like affordable energy, and like the thing that we see at the end of the street, when we look down at the end of the street, right? What do we do with that? So how can we leverage federal programs and folks like Doug on top of this good work and the things that we're doing to create a more comprehensive transformation plan? And that's why we think it's really important that we get some direct representation in terms of a focal point, so that we have a regular direct conduit to the commission. And likewise, you have a regular direct conduit to what we're doing. So I think, other than that, you covered it really well, and thank you for the time.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks to you both. I was fortunate enough to sit down with you guys a while back and kind of get a first run at this. And I don't know if we can quite amp up the energy of how potentially community, UP changing something like this could, could really turn out to be for, for our community and for the county, and again, for the entire UP. This is something that is almost like you're, you got the brass ring somehow, and now you don't know what to do with it. At least, that's the way I see it, okay? Because I'm not quite up to speed the way that you guys are, and I appreciate you guys dumbing it down for me. I need that on occasion, and I'm going to continue to need that. But, quick question. I remember when we talked about this initially, that the EDA can, this can directly impact things going as far as providing some areas of, in our, in our very select area that this is being able to be utilized in the City of Marquette. But I mean, we could go ahead and develop some, some community-wise, as far as affordable housing, I don't want to call it nodes or things like that, but you know, just areas where we can develop affordable housing in conjunction with the economic impact that this could bring with it. Am I, am I wrong with that assumption?
I think what you're probably referring to is the discussion that we had about opportunity zones as part of this, right? And so the way that that fits into all this bigger picture is that as we become successful in driving programs that launch new companies or attract companies to the region in the digital tech economy, there are some other issues that we need to solve, like where are we going to put those people, right? And like where are the childcare, where are the children going to get childcare? And how do we deal with energy, energy issues that we have? So the opportunity zone becomes part of the answer to that, because if, in fact, we get traction on the economic development front, the next question then becomes, how do we solve those bigger problems? And the opportunity zone gives us a chance to help accelerate that, because if we bring EDA funds, state funds, local funds, and then investment funds that would be attracted to that opportunity zone play, we suddenly have a community transformation opportunity, right? We have this opportunity to do more than just create jobs or just attach, it's a systemic opportunity to, to address a lot of our community challenges for the next couple of decades, right? And that's why we really think, you know, if we had someone, kind of a liaison attached to all these efforts, to help us make sure we're in sync with the city's priorities, and likewise, to help us get those priorities quickly back to the community, to the city leadership, that'd be great.
Thanks. And I, I might have been a little bit ahead in my wording there, as far as creating community, but, or creating a neighborhood or something, but anyway, I thank you for, for that clarification.
You were dead on, though, with that, because if we put it in practical terms, right? Imagine, imagine that power plant goes away.
Right.
And in place of that power plant is a mixed-use community that has affordable workforce housing, renewable energy projects, light manufacturing, and we're making good use of that, and we're turning that whole north end of town into a technology park, so that now we have a place to put these companies that we're bringing. That's the vision, right? And now, how do we get to that vision? Well, that's a multi-year discussion, but unless we have that discussion as a community, and unless the EDA sees our community rallying behind that sort of a vision, you know, it becomes much harder for us to realize it, so.
And then, to follow up on that, I almost touched on it there. Timing-wise, you know, I'm very, very focused on, I want to see results on things. And I'm not saying I have to see, you know, things change 100%, but I want to see progress.
Yeah.
What kind of, what kind of timing do you see this type of implementation taking? And are we restricted by this opportunity with their timeline? Do they say, okay, you've got us for a year, that you've got us for three years, and after that point, we're going to pull out and then we go somewhere else?
We, as a community, have to look at this as a 20-to-30-year timeline that we're committed to. But in the near term, you know, think about the things that have been happening, right? If we think about, we started this journey with talent two years ago. We wanted to, we wanted to focus on building talent for a new economy, and we chose cybersecurity. We rallied $2.5 million to the table from the state of Michigan, and now we're rolling out curriculum to 21 school districts around the Upper Peninsula. The next thing, that was a door opener. It wasn't about cybersecurity, it was about the new economy. Now, the next thing we're doing is we're working on this project with the Smart Zone to start defining, how could we take that same concept and take it to, from cybersecurity to other things in the new economy? That piece of work then led to, all of a sudden, this award from the Technical Assistance Grant. So that's now bringing federal money on top of state money. And this is results. It's happening now, right? We're training kids, we're getting money, we're getting the attention of the EDA. The next piece of this puzzle, and that's what we're here with Doug this week to do, is to start getting people excited about, how do we create that longer-term vision that all of you can rally behind, and that the EDA can bring multiple streams of funding to the table with? And then when we have that story, we bring it to the investors, who would come behind an opportunity zone play, and we have a package of transformational things that we can do, some of which start right away, right? It's not, we wait 20 years. And I'm standing here as a representative of, look, I quit my job and started, I'm investing in the community right downtown, because it's happening, we're doing it. But if we do this as a community, it will happen faster, and it will happen bigger. So.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bonzal?
First of all, I mean, thank you both for all of the work that you've done already. You know, you mentioned the need for the community to really rally behind these efforts. And I mean, I'm, I'm ready to rally, but, so, so thank you. I was just curious about a couple of things. First, who do you want this liaison to be? Because I think that in your slide, you said that you'd like it to be a commission liaison, but are you envisioning a city staff person who maybe could be this liaison with your organization, or you want a commissioner?
Could be a city staff. It could be a city staff. I mean, it's that, we'll leave that decision with you. I do think that some of this stuff is, you know, we're dealing with a lot of different entities, city-state and, and federal, and business entities, that, you know, sometimes some of these conversations that we get into, it would be really good to have a commissioner involved, just because then you get a little bit more direct representation strategically. But, you know, maybe it's a combination. We're not here to prescribe who it is, we just want to have a more direct conduit.
Sure. Maybe both. The other question I had, and this is more general, I suppose, but I'm interested to hear your, your thoughts on it. What would you say right now are the biggest, is the biggest obstacle, or maybe, you know, two or three obstacles, that might be restricting this new economy growth in the City of Marquette that you're talking about?
Do you want to, having worked in this area for the last five years, maybe, maybe you give your perspective first, and then I'll weigh in.
I honestly think it's probably just a cultural shift. So I grew up in the southern half of the UP. I'm not a Marquette native, but I moved here in 2012 for college and have been here ever since. And it's not just a Marquette thing. I think it's just, being in a small town, you're not exposed to all of the opportunities and potential of the new economy. I mean, how often do we hear about AI, or how often do we hear about, you know, machine learning? But when I was checking out at Meyer last night, it actually, they have AI worked into their systems, and so if you reach too far over with an item that you haven't scanned, and it looks like you're going to bag it, it now freezes the machine, calls an attendant over, and plays back a video of what you just did, all without having anyone interact with it at all. And so you see real-world examples of like that, of things like that, that are happening every day, but we're just not aware of them, because we don't have those companies here, we don't have that culture here quite yet. And so what I think we need to do, and I think part of what we're looking to do with this grant, is to have more community events, to have opportunities in the schools, to make students aware of it, to get college students involved, and even maybe look at some partnerships with other universities that maybe are a little bit more focused on this, to come and interact with our students here, to really get a broad, like, spectrum of people aware of these opportunities.
And I think the only thing I would add to that is intention. That's really the only thing that's missing. We, as a community, if we intend something, we make it happen. And we, in a smaller group, have made some really, really good strides, I think, showing that the potential of this, and the potential of the direction. It should be no secret to any of us that the 21st century jobs are different, right? We all know this. And so if we could take the assets that we already have in this community and get them rallied behind an intention point, and if the commission were sending that message, and if the commission and the DDA and the EDOs that are here all at least had the same vision they could articulate, I think it would make a huge difference. So I really think that's the one thing in our way right now. Everything else, we've got. We've got.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Commissioner Lorenzer?
This is exciting. I think it was nine years ago today that President Obama was here, and he was talking about Marquette being basically a hub for a new economy. He was talking about bringing broadband to rural areas. And I'm wondering how you think, how far we've come in the past decade? And, well, if you just want to maybe address that, do we have things to, to work on inside of our communities, outside of a municipal rule? Do you know what I'm asking? Like, do we have rural and rural broadband areas? You know, are we, are we equipped to build a new economy?
Yeah. I mean, I think we, in comparison to a lot of the other cities you saw up on that chart about, you know, who we were in competition with, we, one of the things we do have is NMU has been building out a broadband network. The Peninsula Fiber Network is actually quite a very good infrastructure up here. Marquette itself has quite good, although some of us would argue at times, maybe we don't, but actually has quite good connectivity. And if we, if we really highlight, a lot of things have been piloted here, right? Charter, I don't know if it was Charter at the time, but we were the first community in the United States to roll out cable modems. I know, because I was there rolling them out 20 years ago. And, and that was one of my first entrepreneurial pursuits before I left Marquette and came back 10 years ago. But, so we've piloted things like that. We've piloted, you know, we were the first university, Northern Michigan University was the first one to have a, everybody has to have a laptop rule. And people were dragged dick-kicking and screaming to that, but it turned out to be, we were setting the standard for the new economy. And Obama came and visited here because of what we were doing with rural broadband. Is there work to do? Absolutely. I live out of the city now, and I'm, you know, 12 miles out, and there's no broadband out there. So I've had to do some, some things that were unnatural to get broadband. But, so, but yes, we've made good progress. And, and as a community, we've got all of the things that young entrepreneurs, young tech workers, young families want, all of the things, except a big flag-waving, come on, let's do this, you know? And, and we do have some problems with workforce housing, and we do have some problems with energy prices. But I think we can deal with all of that much more readily if we're telling a story that is germane to the new economy, that investors want to get behind.
Yeah. I think you actually just touched on my, my second question, is, you know, we can have these smart zones, and we can build this talent, and we can have the technological capabilities, but a big part of inviting that, we're not just asking small businesses to come in, we're asking for large tech companies to come in and make a, a pretty hefty investment into Marquette. So a big portion of this needs to be outreach to these, to these companies. And I'm wondering if you, I know we talked about it a little bit last summer with the Tech Econ Summit, but can you touch on outreach plans or things that you would like us to be involved with?
Yeah. So on the private sector side, myself, the Smart Zone, others have been involved directly in recruiting and, and speaking with not huge companies, but much larger than what we've got here, about apprenticeships and about building satellite offices here. And what we're seeking to do in terms of building an innovation outpost is, is specifically aimed at bringing companies to see Marquette, to see that employees can have great quality of life, that they be very loyal, and they tend to stay with their companies longer when they can live in a place like this. The cost basis, I kind of don't like to argue that it costs, you know, I don't like the idea that, you know, hire cheaper employees up here. I think that people should be able to have high-paying jobs in small towns, because I know that they're doing it today. But companies do think about that. And, and so, you know, I think we've got, we've got some momentum on that end, but one thing that would be good for the commission from a political perspective, look at what Google's doing downstate, and look at those deals that are being made with Google in Michigan. And where is our representation in those conversations, and why doesn't Google have a requirement to open a Marquette office when they make those deals with them down in southeast Michigan? Now, that's more of a state-level discussion, but all of you could have that state-level discussion. I've had it with Sarah. So like, let's see, what if we had that agenda item, and we were sending that agenda item to the people that have those relationships?
Yeah. Well- Well, I think, I can't speak for everybody, but I think it would be an honor to be a conduit to this initiative, so, thank you for your work on this.
Thanks.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Thank you both for coming up and present, I really appreciate it, I know we all do. You know, it really is a remarkable opportunity to step into the future, and the potential out there is arguably, as you've stated, limitless, I think, for us. When we think of, of what the city's done already, and I'll go back, I think about four or five years ago when we established the Smart Zone, and that was an action of the City Commission to do that, and that does indeed put a tiff on basically all of the city to partially fund the development work going on for it. It was done with this type of thing in mind, with the ability to, to grow the city aggressively into the 21st century. But you always come to a crossroads, and I, I think you really talked about it without quite saying it, but you, you know, Marquette has, always has a decision, and you can make that decision to do nothing and just kind of drift along with the way things are going, or you can make the opposite decision to really go into aggressively growing into the 21st century. And I, I believe this commission would be aligned with the former, or rather, the latter, to grow aggressively into the 21st century, and I know that, I think the preponderance of our citizens feel the same way. We see it every day, turn on your TV and look at the selections you have now as opposed to what we had 10 or 15 or 20 years ago. And I remember retiring up here, I'll go back and say 22 years ago, when we were the first community in the state, I believe, to have high-speed, low-dry cable. And that was remarkable for Marquette. So those things are in place, and I think the community certainly is, is ready to do what you're suggesting that we do. So thank you for coming again, and thank you for giving us the opportunity, and I certainly want to have the, another opportunity really to sit down and talk more with you, because you, you gave us a briefing through a fire hose.
Yes.
And there's a lot of water in there that we have to drink yet and more thoroughly understand, but thank you for doing it.
We did our best to pare it down to the five minutes, and thank you for the extra time for Q and A. It, it is a big topic, and more conversations are definitely needed, but thanks for the opportunity.
All right, thank you very much, and I look forward to learning what happens next. All right, our next presentation tonight is about the Harbor Advisory Committee, and Lynette Van Welsoners.
Good job.
All right, thanks. My Dutch ancestry came through, is going to give the presentations for us tonight.
All right, I'm from the Harbor Advisory Committee. I mean, my name is Lynette Van Welsoners, also known as Lynn. But the purpose, actually, let me back up. We still have one vacancy on our committee, and we're always looking for someone else. Come June, we will have two, so we may, we need two more. That will be the end of my, I'll be terming out at that point. The purpose of our commission, or our committee, is to advise the city on the shoreline and offshore waters near Marquette with the emphasis on harbor and waterfront development regarding both pleasure craft and commercial vessels, mooring fields, and launch facilities. We have seven members that serve three-year terms. Our meetings are the third Tuesdays of the month at 5:15, and they're in the Citizens' Forum in Lakeview Arena, and, except in November and December, and then they are the second Tuesday of the month. It's on my screen. It just took a minute.
You just followed the technology presentation?
I did!
It was our fault, we hacked it.
Notice it didn't really faze me, I just kept going, because it seems to not want to stay up.
There we go.
There. So I already went through that screen, and that screen. Our accomplishments for the past year, we recommended the 2020 seasonal maintenance rate structure, we had a stakeholder meeting as far as the founders landing and peer reuse concepts, we provided feedback in the conceptual design for the Prescott Marina Peer Replacement Project, and we also were a part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Our goals for the upcoming year, we're going to review the strategic priorities in the Harbor Master Plan, we're going to continue to engage in the waterfront use policies, the motorized launches, the non-motorized launches, the kayak, the outfitting. We're also going to advise waterfront projects which involve the motorized and non-motorized waterfront, including Prescott Marina, founders landing, and the Or Dock. Some of the stuff that we know is going to come up in the future, Lake Superior waterfront access, in regard to the community recreational use of the waterfront, motorized and non-motorized recreational use of the waterfront, commercial watercraft, winter recreational trends on the waterfront, and then the one that's always on everyone, community membership and recruitment. So it's really important to be involved and give back to the community, but also be a voice. Short and sweet.
Commissioner's legal.
No questions, more comments. A few years ago, I've been watching the Harbor Advisory Committee for a long time. At some point in time, I can see myself, even though I have a little 12-foot, 16-foot aluminum boat, that's not, that's not the part I'm concerned about. My concern is, you know, doing exactly what you do with the, with the shoreline and the, the oversight in that respect. And I, I just really want to thank the committee for what they do. But a few years ago, this committee had a complete turnover, and all of a sudden, I was like, man, I really bummed out, they were, they were struggling. Lynn, you must have come in around that time and kind of started to get things back on track. To see that you're one, one person short of a full committee right now is exciting, and to see that the, the energy's back over there, so somebody get your heiny in line to get on the advisory committee, and we're going to need another one come June, because you guys have done and been a part of a lot of, there's been so many relative changes between the items that you mentioned, whether we're talking the founders and the Or Dock and the, the new, the new Marina. I mean, there's been so many changes in the last six, seven years that you guys have been a part of, and without that voice, you know, I realize it's not been easy, and it's not, you don't win all your battles, but the fact is, is that you're there and you're working hard. So thank you for that, and take it back to committee, and please, you know, let them know how much we appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Commissioner Frazier.
Thank you again for the great work. I've been boating for a few years, so I know a little about the harbor. I've seen the water go up and down a little bit, you know, we've gone from, okay, the Edinburgh, my dad and I have a little, we store boats, and I remember a couple guys from Ussing came down with their boats from Picket Rock, the, the, with the Picket Rocks, like, the patrol, the park patrol. I said, "Hey, you state people, it's all your fault." You pulled the plug on the lakes, and you drained all the water. I said, "Why is there a fault? Because it's state fault, it's always state fault," you know? And now we have too much water, so, I mean, it goes up and down, and we all see that, and, so I know, I'm thankful that the Prescott Marina finally get to be rebuilt. I mean, I've had like three generations in that Marina. I was in the Marina for a while, it's been around for a while, and I'm glad it finally get rebuilt, it needed to be rebuilt. I've heard some complaints about the, the boat latch ramp, but that's a different story altogether, and so hopefully everything gets taken care of, the Marina will be good, and hopefully the new boaters will enjoy it and get back to the old days. And I'm glad the Marina does a great job, they're good and good, you guys do a good job doing things good. So the, is, I think, you know, not your guy, but the Phil's Fish Dock, may have to work on putting more markers on the old pilings there that are underwater. I know they've put off the Association Dock and Phil's Dock, they have a few markers that they may have to put some more on there because they're completely underwater now just to, for, you know, non-experienced boaters not denting their boats and there's something like that, but something to think about. Nice for your terms, and hope you don't turn out too late.
I actually had a question for the, do you have an update on the Prescott Marina reconstruction, or I don't, how the timing, is that, are we going to be good to go this spring, or how's, how's it going out there?
John, can you help with that one?
I found the on button, so we're good. The Marina's almost fully complete, the docks are built and installed, the only things that are left are just a little bit of site reclamation, so parking lot, turf, a few things like that, so we'll be good to go in the, in the spring, and letters are out to the boaters currently for their first, second, and third choices as far as slip sizes, and then we'll be working through the seniority list and getting people in spots, so should be good to go.
That's good news. And, and then this, the Harbor Master Plan that you said you guys are going to be reviewing, is that, that's both harbors? And could you just maybe say a little bit more about what that covers and what, what you expect to come out of that?
Well, so there's a master plan that every five years gets reviewed, so it, it is a matter of just going back and making sure that we're following what was on the plan and updating it as necessary, and it does include both harbors, the Or Dock, pretty much all of the waterfronts.
And, and do you guys address the changing lake levels at all in those master plans?
You know what, I actually can't answer that question. I'm assuming that at some point, somehow, they are addressed as far as peers and things, if we need to adjust things or do whatever, it will be addressed, but it's not actually, I believe, a part of the plan.
Given the big changes in front of us, we might want to think about it some more, the lakes just hit the highest, highest levels they've ever been this past month. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Commissioner Stonehouse.
Just a couple of quick comments, please. You know, Marquette's a harbor community. We are a port community, we have been for 171 years, and the work that the Harbor Advisory Board does, Advisory Committee does, is critical to what we are, what we do, and what our future is, and I want to thank you for, for really helping to, helping to carry that water, no pun intended. But, ooh, that was a bad one, right? And I'm speaking here as, as an old past chair of the Harbor Committee and a longtime member of it, and just really enjoy seeing the good work that you do. And once upon a time, the committee spent all of its time on marinas, because it perceived itself to be a Marina Committee, and it took some time to break that, that out, that it's not a Marina Committee, if, it's really the harbor, it's everything. If water touches it, you guys have got a piece of the action on it, and that's critically important to all of us. So thank you very much for what you do, and please continue to do it, and find one more member, please.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the work that you guys do. All right, that concludes our presentations this evening, and we're now going to move into item number four, which is a public hearing. Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you. The Marquette City Commission in October of 2019 adopted Ordinance Number 682 to allow for the eventual operation of adult-use marijuana establishments in the city of Marquette. Per this ordinance, the city will begin accepting applications for these licenses on March 1st of this year. In advance of the March 1st date, the Planning Commission has worked in conjunction with city staff to create recommended zoning regulations for adult-use marijuana establishments. The recommendations are detailed in the attached document, while the attached maps highlight the proposed locations where each type of establishment would be allowed. Additionally, unrelated items are included in these proposed amendments and are aimed at refining and clarifying the LDC, which was adopted in early 2019. While these changes are numerous, several serve to clarify certain sections of the LDC and to add or delete language related to items that were previously omitted, others involve the addition of certain other uses in specific districts. These recommended changes were developed, discussed, and refined during several work sessions during the final months of 2019, and were approved with amendments by the Planning Commission following a January 7th public hearing. It was moved by M. Larson, seconded by E. Brooks, and approved on a 4-3 vote that after review of the draft Land Development Code amendments presented as case 01-ZOA-01-2020, and after conducting a public hearing and careful consideration of the contents of the draft LDC amendments, the Planning Commission finds that the draft LDC amendments are justified and appropriate, and therefore should be approved by the City Commission with the revision to allow retail marijuana establishments in the T5 sub-district of the Third Street Corridor Form-Based Code District. This public hearing was scheduled at the January 13th, 2020 City Commission meeting, and a joint work session with the Planning Commission was held on January 29th, 2020 to discuss the recommended changes. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt Ordinance Number 688 Land Development Code amendments, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. This public hearing is now open. If you have comments, please come forward. There's no need to give your address if you've already spoken, and you will again have three
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic. My questions are for the Chief of Police. Once we have marijuana retail establishments in Marquette, what will your department be able to do in terms of stopping people at a traffic stop and determining that they're under the influence of marijuana as opposed to under the influence of alcohol? And I'm not saying this because I'm assuming they will be, I know that right now you have breathalyzers for alcohol and other proven techniques that have been accepted by courts of law. What will you and other police, peace officers have in the Upper Peninsula to show that you've got somebody driving under the influence of marijuana? That's the first question. The second question I have is, do you have a plan for increased security for these marijuana establishments considering that no bank will take a check from them, so they're going to have to deal in cash only, they're going to have to have cash on-site, and they're going to have to have a place to store and maintain that cash, which means they're going to be targets for people of opportunity? And again, I have no way of knowing when and where this is going to happen, but I'm assuming with the planning that you've done, that you have a plan in place to deal with a large number of buildings that are going to have a lot of cash in them. And number three, the concern that I have is for a general comment about how much smell of marijuana will constitute a public nuisance that can be acted upon? Has that number been established in any of these? I can't find it in any of the documents, but it's been documented in other areas that have gone to recreational marijuana establishments, that the overwhelming smell of marijuana has caused a detriment to certain neighborhoods, and I was wondering, is, it's, this doesn't seem to have been addressed, so if it's not addressed in this, it's got to be dealt with under public nuisance law. So my three questions, two for the Chief of Police and one for the ordinance itself. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish for a public comment at this time? All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and, and close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse.
Your Honor, I would motion to accept Ordinance 688, the Land Development Code amendments.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Banzel.
I would second that motion.
Discussion.
While the Planning Commission has put a terrific amount of time into
Working out the details for the document, I think they've done extraordinarily good job of trying to balance out conflicting requirements. They presented it to us at the work session just a couple weeks ago. We had a good chance to go through it and understand it, so I think that now's the time when we accept the ordinance as written, and like all ordinances, we have an opportunity at a later date to go back and change it and tune it if we see individual requirements that we have to adjust.
Commissioner Banzel.
I have no further comment, other than that I agree with what Commissioner Stonehouse said. I believe, you know, we may have some amendments that are being offered momentarily, and that'll be another discussion, but I think that regardless of the precise outcome of tonight, tonight's votes and discussion, that we're going to have a good system moving forward, and I'm excited to see what happens this next year and also revisit in a year, which I think is something that maybe not everybody is quite aware that we're going to be doing, but this is really a process of learning for everybody, and we're doing our very best as the city. But of course, there will be things that we can't anticipate fully, and And so we'll be revisiting all of this in one year to determine what changes need to be made.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to go ahead and echo that statement there. I think the important thing here is that the process that we've followed has been done to a T by the Planning Commission. They've given us a lot of very good insight. I was very impressed with how prepared they were at the last meeting to give us the very fine details. I think that, you know, in every situation, there's going to be somebody that's not going to be 100% happy with what the outcome is. I think we heard of one of those voiced tonight, and we did hear it at the last meeting as well. The Land Development Code revision has been amended and changed from its initial major renovation that has been done in the last couple of years. And it's already being amended as we've moved along with certain areas that we found that might need to be tweaked. And that's exactly what's going to happen here. You know, we'll go back and take everybody's thoughts into consideration, bring it back the proper way that should be done through the right channels, and try to make changes that we see fit if they are, in fact, good for our community and that we are looking out for the health and welfare of those people that are our neighbors. I think that that's what it comes down to. I don't think that we should be making any sort of exceptions for, you know, I'm not going to say that there won't be exceptions made in the future, but I don't think that there should be any last-minute exceptions with the way that this has been vetted through the proper channels throughout this entire process. And I compliment the Planning Commission for their work once more.
Commissioner Lawrence?
So this is a pretty hefty, complicated ordinance, the new Land Development Code amendments. I do want to make sure that we have ample discussion about the Third Street Corridor. I know that T-5 was passed. It was very tight, and there was two Planning Commissioners missing from that vote. So I think, I really appreciate the work that the Planning Commission did on this, but I want to, you know, acknowledge that we are all approaching something that nobody up here has ever regulated before. And I would like to offer an amendment to include, well, I have a few amendments, but I'm going to see what the commission thinks of this first. But I would like to include T-4 in the retail, the retail map. I don't see much, too much of a distinction from the downtown or the Third Street Corridor between T-5 and T-4. I want to make sure that we are doing an inclusive ordinance that isn't discriminatory towards any business. I know we're talking about maybe two, two or three different areas in T-4 that could be available that are nonbuffered. So if I could get help with language on how to offer this amendment, that would be great. Otherwise, I've looked through the ordinance, and it's kind of, I mean, can we just include T-4 wherever there's T-5?
I would say you would move to amend the resolution to include the T-4 sub-district of the Third Street Corridor as a special land use for retail marijuana licenses.
Okay. So I move that we amend ordinance 688 to include Third Street Corridor subsection T-4 into the retail marijuana amendment. Is that, is that okay?
Do I have a second? Sorry, Commissioner Bonzel?
For nothing else, for the sake of discussion, I'll second the motion.
Discussion? So you get to go for it.
Yeah, so if somebody could explain to me the total distinction between T-4, maybe you can invite a Planning Commission member up here to maybe discuss why this section was not included in the Third Street Corridor and...
Okay, I invite the Chair of the Planning Commission, Joy Cardillo, to come to the podium, please.
Hi. So T-4, there is a distinction in the description of Third Street Corridor that distinguishes T-5 as being a bit more dense and more urban, and T-4 is, you know, it's sort of designed as a kind of a dumbbell. And, you know, initially, T-5 wasn't in the district. You know, the idea was originally that the Third Street would not have retail at all. It was brought forward that there are very few properties within T-5. And so I think I had pointed out at the work session, you know, it actually was a point of compromise where we, when we looked at the practical ramifications of the buffer zones, I think it isolated two, maybe three, properties in the T-5. And so in that particular case, we were able to say like, okay, these three properties are actually appropriate, like they wouldn't be inappropriate uses for this. Particularly, they were all kind of quite separate from each other. You know, they weren't, you know, they were, we were able to identify that they wouldn't be inappropriate. The difference is, you know, typically, we don't like to take a single lot and say, you know, this lot wants to be this, and so we're going to, you know, change it for everybody. It just so happened that because of the ramifications of the buffer zones, it made an acceptable compromise. I think the idea was that because Third Street has gone through this long, ongoing process of being very integrated in residential and because the MRTMA and the city ordinance exclude marijuana from residential areas, that was the logic behind not including them. And sort of the direct ramifications of the buffer zones on T-5 was to create these sort of very isolated properties. The same ramifications on T-4 is that you get sort of one clustered sort of set of corners, I think, is it one corner or two sets of corners? And that just didn't seem like what we were trying to go for there.
My only worry is that if we, I mean, we have buffer zones. There's buffer zones that I don't necessarily understand. I think, you know, I've attended all the cannabis workshops and before I was City Commissioner to all the meetings, and no one's ever been able to explain to me a buffer zone around a religious institution. And I'm open to that discussion to hear why we do that. But we already have this system in place in the city where we're really concentrating where we can put cannabis establishments. And my worry is that we're going to have a corner section with three different cannabis shops right next door to each other. And that's not good for competition. It's not good for, you know, the free market to exist. It's not good for the vertically-integrated commerce that we need in the city. And I think spreading it out, knowing that we have very robust buffer zones, almost all of Washington is now blocked out because of substance abuse treatment facilities, which is a buffer zone that I understand. But I would like to take the approach first, you know, right now, instead of revisiting it in the future, to include it, because I think we need to be consistent. I feel like the Third Street Corridor in T-4 included in T-5 is, you know, we just had a meeting with the DDA or Planning Consultant who came to the DDA. Yeah, and we wanted to figure out ways to have a cohesive downtown. And one of those things mentioned was to have Third Street included, and it didn't include just T-5 and Third Street. You know, we wanted to be able to have commercial establishments all through T-4. So, yeah, that's my, those are my public comments about T-4.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I have a...
Thank you, Joy.
I just have a couple of thoughts on this. I understand the desire to proceed with caution. This is new territory that we're in as a community. And so I understand why the Planning Commission, the majority of the Planning Commission, made the decision that it did with regards to trying to proceed with caution and only allowing marijuana retail in the T-5 district, which, just to make this a little bit clearer and cut through some of this legalese that we're talking about with zoning and planning and all of that, for people who are watching or at the meeting, T-5 is the northern and the southern portions of Third Street, whereas the T-4 district is the central portion. You know, in reality, at least in my opinion, I live just a couple of blocks away from the T-5 district. The land uses in the Third Street Corridor are quite different from most of the mixed-use land uses in the city. Third Street is predominantly commercial, whereas citywide, mixed-use, the mixed-use zone is mostly used for residential purposes. The land uses in T-4, in reality, on the ground when you're walking down Third Street, do not feel or look very different from the, in any substantial way, from the land uses in the T-5 district. And also, when you look at the proposed zoning maps with the buffers, this would only add the equivalent of about one additional block on Third Street where marijuana retail could exist. And finally, personally, I do not see a marijuana retail establishment as substantially different in terms of its external effects on surrounding neighborhoods or businesses than a liquor store or a bar. And we already have plenty of those on Third Street. So in my view, if you're going to allow marijuana retail in the T-5 district, which I believe we should, then we also should allow it in the T-4 district. For that reason, I'll be in favor of this amendment.
I have a clarifying question, Joy. Commissioner Plan, Commissioner Cardillo, Committee Chair, that's what I was... You said it was a product of a compromise. Could you maybe give us a little, give all of us a background on that compromise?
So it was, this was a case where it was, a community member came up and requested this based on a specific property. And like I said, you know, we make it a point not to make decisions based on specific properties. However, when we, but we do always, you know, we take these requests seriously. And so, you know, the question goes to the overall, like, what would the effect on all of T-5 be to adding this in? And so when we actually went in and looked at the sort of specific ramifications based on the way the buffer zones laid out, we realized that, you know, we're talking about two, probably two properties. And they were both quite close to the downtown, the very downtown edge near Washington to begin with. And so it seemed like a compromise that everybody was willing to make. Does that make sense?
I think versus not having any, is that?
Yeah.
Not having any establishments on, that's what I was...
Yeah, so we were originally not going to have, you know, based us on this idea that we're using the logic of the sort of residential component and the fact that Third Street, so Third Street typically, because so many residential properties, the backyards, but I understand that from the street scape, it is very commercial, and I have no arguments with that. But just as, from the perspective of the Planning Commission, we have dealt with very many issues between bars and all different types of establishments where there's a lot of negotiation between the public and the private. And I think it's totally appropriate that we're sort of negotiating things at the Planning Commission level. But, you know, from our perspective, this is a reality of sort of this long-term goal that we've had of integrating a very vital Third Street Corridor into a heavily residential neighborhood. And, you know, it's, there's the idealized version of it that we are all moving towards. And then there's the reality of it where, you know, it often comes down to sort of on the Planning Commission, like, okay, you have to add a fence or, you know, so that somebody who's got a residential backyard that butts up against a commercial property, you know, their property values are respected and their quality of life is respected. So it's really, it's really just about giving us time to sort of figure out what the realities of these, this new typology is. And then, you know, we can go from there. We just have so little knowledge about what the real-time effects are going to be. And so this was just a way for us to sort of slowly integrate this into the community because, like I said, we do deal with the sort of integration between the public and private on Third Street fairly regularly. And it's successful, and we're able to do it, but it is real.
Thank you, that was very helpful. Commissioner Schlegel has a...
I'm curious here, you know, we went to the DDA in the planning process. We asked for input from them, and they said that they're going to go along with the decision made by the Planning Commission and the City Commission. What's, what is your personal interest with T-4? Why, I mean, why the beef? Please.
No beef. I want to make sure that we have a consistent, inclusive ordinance.
How is it not?
Because we're sectioning off half of Third Street. We, you know, we already have issues where we have property owners who feel discluded from this ordinance because of the new Land Development Code as of 2019. And I think that we should probably address that in maybe a different conversation or a different amendment. But this, I just want to make sure that we are spreading the cannabis establishments as far as they can go. I believe it's already a heavy-regulated industry that we're not being reckless. And I appreciate the Planning Commission's work on it. But again, there was two Commissioners from that meeting missing. It was a tight vote on T-5. So we also have the ability in the charge to make sure that we are doing our due diligence in making sure that we are including as many properties as possible for the freest market to shape.
Thank you. I think, are we ready for a vote on the amendment? Maybe restate the amendment, please, Clerk?
Sure. So there is a main motion to approve the ordinance as presented, and then an amendment up for a vote, which would amend that ordinance to include the T-4 sub-district for retail establishments.
And that is a roll call vote?
It can be, yes.
We're voting on the amendment, though.
Just on the amendment. So regardless of the outcome, you're still going to have to vote on whatever's remaining on the main motion.
Okay, thank you.
So on the amendment, Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
No.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
No.
Mayor Protemhill?
No.
That motion fails.
All right. So that means we're back to the original motion. Could you maybe restate that at this time? It's pretty simple.
Yeah, so the main motion now on the floor is to simply approve ordinance number 688 as presented on the agenda.
Any further discussion at this time, Commissioners? Commissioner Bonzel?
I would only add that I think it was important that we just had that discussion. And looking forward to revisiting this in a year's time and seeing what revisions, if any, need to be made. But I'm really excited about this next step forward for our community. I think that the Planning Commission did an excellent job in crafting the amendments to our Land Development Code. And looking forward to voting yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
I was going to offer another amendment if this, if that passed, but I'm just going to maybe ask the question about how we can address the...
to maybe ask the question about how we can address the US 411651 property. And if we're able, maybe not in this ordinance, but to direct Planning Commission to look at any property in the city of Marquette that had changed from commercial to mixed use. I understand that legally, we didn't have to give notice to any individual property owners, but I think we're encountering, encountering some difficulties in maybe their awareness of their rezoning, which has kind of brought some contentious topics up here today. And I, do I have the ability to...
I'm going to have the City Manager speak to that.
Thank you. I'll start the conversation, and Dennis, you can help me with this, but, or Sean. But, you know, the, the only, other than changing all of the mixed use to allow retail establishments, the only avenue I see available, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, is to or for the property owner at that location to appeal to the Planning Commission for a zoning change or a zoning amendment after this amendment, or after this zoning ordinance passes. Dennis, do you see anything else in there? And, I'm sorry, what was the rest of the question?
No, I think that, so you want the property owner to take the initiative to talk to the Planning Commission? We can't direct Planning Commission to relook at, there's three properties.
Yeah, we can, you can include in a motion, I guess, to direct the Planning Commission to do that. I mean, they do work for the Commission. The Commission would have to approve it on a majority vote. But I think that if you want that to happen, you'd have to do that specifically, yes. But otherwise, my recommendation, at least in the short term, would be to direct the property owner to, to address the Planning Commission directly and see what comes out of that.
And if we were to direct the Planning Commission to do that, it wouldn't be part of this ordinance?
No, it would be a separate action.
A different agenda item, so a different meaning?
Correct.
Okay.
Excuse me while I have the microphone. If I could just add one more thing. If you're moving on with this motion, I would, I've heard a couple Commissioners talk about a review in one year. And if you want that to happen, I'd like you to put forth another motion directing the City Manager to direct or directing the Planning Commission to review it in one year. If that's what you want as part of this action. Otherwise, it is what it is, and just goes on forever and ever until it's changed. But if you want a specific return, I'd like a motion to direct us to do that.
Commissioners, Lorenzer?
I motion that we direct City staff to look at this ordinance 688 in, by February of 2021.
So, you can incorporate that maybe as an amendment to this motion, perhaps? Or you can make a following motion, after, after this main motion is voted on?
Okay.
So if this motion passes, you could immediately make a follow-up.
Otherwise, it's like stuck in the ordinance to revisit it?
I mean, it could just be, it could be, it's not technically in the ordinance, but it could be a part of the motion. You could amend, you could amend the original motion.
Okay.
To include that.
Okay. Looks like we're, Clerk, could you please call the roll call vote on the original motion?
Yeah, so just to clarify, we're, this is just on the motion, there's no revisit in this vote. Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
No.
Commissioner Lorenzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
I would like to make the motion that City staff look at ordinance number 688 land development code amendments, specifically the cannabis changes, though, in one year by February 2021.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Since we're not starting until March, to make it March to March?
Oh. Yeah. Okay.
And then to have staff, and to have, how do you want to have it, where, so that Planning Commission gets their piece?
Just make any recommendations as necessary.
Okay.
Okay. I motion that we direct City staff to revisit ordinance number 688 land development code amendments and obtain recommendations from the Planning Commission by March 2021.
Second, or is there a second on this? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
No.
Commissioner Bonzal?
No further discussion.
Are we ready to vote? All right, well, could we have the Clerk please call the roll on that, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lorenzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
All right, so we are finished with Agenda Item 4. Thank you. We've moved on to Agenda Item Number 5, which is our consent agenda tonight. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
And none, seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to our new business this evening. First is the appointment of a new Director of Administrative Services, Kyle. Could you please read the background?
Thank you. The City Manager recommends the appointment of Assistant City Manager Jennifer LaPage to the position of Director of Administrative Services effective March 2 of 2020. Department head positions are the equivalent of administrative officer positions under the Charter and City Code. The appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the retirement of current Director Susan Bohor on February 28 of 2020. Jennifer has a BS in Business Computer Information Systems from Northern Michigan University, and recently received professional certification in human resources from the International Public Management Association for Human Resources. She was hired by the city in 2019 as an IT specialist and was promoted to Management Analyst in 2012 and to the position of Assistant City Manager in 2015. Her varied background makes her uniquely qualified for this position. As the Department Head for Administrative Services, Jennifer will oversee the Human Resources, Information Technology, and the City Clerk divisions. The vacant Assistant City Manager position will be filled by Sean Hobbins, who is currently the Management Analyst in the City Manager's office. Sean is also a graduate of Northern Michigan University with a master's degree in public administration. Sean was a fellowship student at the city while in graduate school and worked for AmeriCorps as a public safety analyst and as a city management intern with the city of Royal Oak before being hired by the city as a Management Analyst in 2015. The city charter provides that the City Manager appoints administrative officer positions subject to confirmation by the City Commission. Fiscal effect, the FY 2019-2020 budget has sufficient funds to cover this appointment. Recommendation, confirm the City Manager's appointment of Jennifer LaPage as Director of Administrative Services effective March 2, 2020. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I'd like to motion to confirm, as, or rather confirm, the City Manager's appointment of Jennifer LaPage as Director of Administrative Services effective March 2, 2020.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
And I would like to first recognize the City Manager, who would like to speak about this change.
Thank you. Just a few comments. You know, the Administrative Services, just for all of those listening, involves the Human Resources Department, the IT Department, and the Clerk's office. And it is, it is an integral part of the city function. I was going to mention Jen's promotions and movements through the city, but that's already been done. But she and I essentially moved into the City Manager's office together in 2015, and since that time, she's done an outstanding job in that position. She has taken on the role and workload of, I think, many people. And she's done a very good job. She's gone out of her way to learn, to become more efficient, to become more productive, and really to contribute to the function of the city. And I'm happy to say she's here with her family. They are currently in the front row. After everybody left, now they're in the front row. But, you know, Jen has done an outstanding job and well-deserved me this promotion. And while I'm at it, you know, Sean Hobbins, who's over here to the left, worked under Jen for those same five years, and is ready to step into her previous position very nicely as well. So, thank you, and I appreciate the support on this appointment.
Any further comments, Commissioners? Thank you very much, Jen, for all you've done. You're one of the folks who absolutely gets things done around here, and everyone does. We, it's a tight budget, and folks get a lot done with the resources that they have. And I, we all thank you and really appreciate you. You're one of those folks who's not out, you know, you don't get to be on camera all the time, but she's really one of the folks who makes things happen. We really greatly appreciate you. It's a well-deserved recognition. Thank you very much. And I do believe we need to vote after all this. I think it's, I just, I just called for a vote. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes 6-0. And next up, new business, is the Fair and Equal Michigan Ballot Initiative endorsement. The Clerk will read the background.
Thank you. Article 3, Division 4 of the Marquette City Code contains the nondiscrimination ordinance as passed by the City Commission on December 14, 2015. The intent of this ordinance is to ensure that no person be denied the equal protection of the laws, nor shall any person be denied the enjoyment of his or her civil rights or be discriminated against because of their actual or perceived race, color, religion, national origin, sex, age, height, weight, marital status, physical or mental disability, family status, sexual orientation, or gender identity. The Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act was passed by the state of Michigan in 1976 to prohibit discriminatory practices, policies, and customs in the exercise of those rights based upon religion, race, color, national origin, age, sex, height, weight, familial status, or marital status. This act does not include protections for sexual orientation and gender identity. Without such protections, someone who is gay, lesbian, transgender, or does not present typically for their sex can encounter legal discrimination. The Fair and Equal Michigan Ballot Initiative campaign has been started to amend the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act to define sex as gender, sexual orientation, and gender identity or expression. This campaign is seeking public support from Michigan mayors and has requested the support of Mayor Jenna Smith. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, authorize the mayor to sign the resolution supporting the Fair and Equal Michigan Ballot Initiative. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Bonzal?
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the resolution supporting the Fair and Equal Michigan Ballot Initiative.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd second the motion.
Discussion? Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion?
Thank you. I think that this is a common sense move. We want to make sure that our city is inclusive of everybody, and I believe that everybody is entitled to the same civil rights. So, under the US Constitution and the Constitution of the state of Michigan. So, I'm happy to support this resolution.
Commissioner Schlegel?
You put it very well. Thank you, Commissioner Bonzal. I'll echo the sentiment and glad to see that we're moving forward.
Commissioner Lorenzer?
I just want to give a little background for the record, and just to make sure that we really understand the gravity of what we're doing. It's a pretty, pretty big deal, it's pretty great. So, current Michigan law prohibits discrimination on the basis of religion, race, color, national origin, age, sex, height, weight, family status, or marital status. But 25% of LGBTQ people have reported experiencing discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity, half of whom said it negatively impacted their work environment. 25% of transgender workers, 25%, 1 in 4, have reported being fired, not hired, or denied of a promotion in 2016 to 2017. Thanks to the interpretation of our Attorney General, Michigan's nondiscriminatory laws include the interpretation of gender and sexual orientation diversity within the word "sex," but new language, the Elliott Larson amendments that we are directing Mayor Smith to support today, it takes it beyond interpretation and defines it more concretely. It definitively includes sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, guaranteeing safeguards in housing, public accommodation, and employment. Inequity, discrimination, and intolerance in any form should never be state sanctioned. And if Marquette's official proclamation of support can help propel this effort, we owe it to an already marginalized group to say, "You're important, you matter, the law will protect you as much as possible, your pronouns or who you love should not be obstacles in your success." So, this is, this is a great thing for Marquette to support, it's a big deal.
And we do have a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lorenzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
All right, motion passes 6-0, and Mayor Smith is very honored and proud to be signing this endorsement. It will be on the ballot, on the November, on your November ballot. And our last new business for tonight is the adult-use marijuana license fees, which will also be a roll call vote. Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you. On November 6, 2018, Michigan voters approved Proposal 1, creating the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, the MRTMA. Section 6 of the MRTMA allows a municipality to charge an annual fee of not more than $5,000 to defray application, administrative, and enforcement costs associated with the operation of the marijuana establishment in the municipality. On October 15, 2019, the City Commission adopted Ordinance Number 682 regarding adult-use marijuana business licenses in the city of Marquette. Section 5.8 of the ordinance states that the municipal license shall include an appropriate non-refundable municipal license application fee as established by City Commission resolution. City staff are recommending a $5,000 annual license fee for all adult-use marijuana establishment licenses identified in Ordinance Number 682. This does not include temporary marijuana events. This fee is non-refundable once an application for an adult-use marijuana license has been submitted to the City Clerk's office. Municipal licenses may be renewed upon receipt of a complete renewal application and fee for any marijuana establishment in good standing. Fiscal effect, the city will realize $5,000 in revenue for each adult-use marijuana application submitted to the City Clerk's office. Recommendation, approve the recommended fee schedule for adult-use marijuana licenses and authorize the Mayor Protem and City Clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
All right, Commissioners, I believe we have a motion by Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the recommended fee schedule for adult-use marijuana licenses and authorize the Mayor Protem and City Clerk to sign the resolution.
Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Discussion?
I have none.
Commissioner Frazier?
No.
Seeing none, we do have a roll call vote. Clerk, could you please read the...
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Lorenzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. All right. We are now to the second public comment period for this evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address unless you have already stated your address.
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. January 13, none of seven members responded to much less considered concerns about their theft of agenda comment from us. None of the six on hand, January 27, offered the courtesy of a response either. They ignored public comment again, not only mine, but that of a man from the DNR who acted disappointed that he couldn't speak during the item. He had ample time for his comment during the first three minutes. So why should he have cared, our members might have wondered? They probably still wonder, even though the reason for the man's disgust was by coincidence explained immediately afterward. He realized that the effectiveness of his comment would be compromised between opening comment and what can be a long wait for the agenda item. None of seven gave a rip. Maybe Mr. Frazier is correct about this current bunch, that it's all of them. Ms. Hill is appreciated for her concern for our lake shore. Ms. Hill is appreciated for her concern for our Lake Shore, but people were also concerned about the Titanic, after it sank, similarly to our beach. Despite her well-meaning concern for our shore, she appears to care less about the effectiveness of our public opportunity. We now know the underlying reasons why Ms. Smith, the attorney, and later four others conspired to steal our time. Laziness, cowardice, dishonesty, sleaziness, and a plethora of other characteristics, all nasty. Their cavalier attitude toward public comment only bolstered my assertion that this board has acted sleazily all along. Our new members hadn't a clue. Mr. Lawrence cared only about the convenience of Madam Mayor. He never considered the public impact. Mr. Bonzel made a few phone calls, thinking he knew what's best for public comment without asking those who use it, including one guy who's spoken here since Mr. Bonzel began nursery school. This board acts unmindfully on too many items, for example, ignoring years of warnings about our beach erosion, the entire time they let us watch our beach wash away. What a helpless feeling. Snubbing a perceived rabble-rouser meant more to them than a beach that thousands hold deer. Like the Titanic, our beach meant nothing until it was too late, in our case, when the road finally became threatened. Tooling around in automobiles is more important to them than our residents and visitors who appreciate nature, when survey after survey shows that our natural amenities are their constituents' utmost priority. This is a consequence of this board's ongoing disregard for our public sentiment. Where was our so-called advocate in Lansing during this fiasco? This board continues to ignore requests for an update on his activities. He's paid with our tax dollars, yet we haven't the right to know what he's up to. Shame on you all, even the newbies. No, thank God Paul Revere was there that night and not the likes of these seven members. The redcoats are here, but is anyone listening?
I hope this doesn't become a regular feature of these meetings, but I've recently seen some Facebook posts from members of the commission, and I've been unsuccessful in resolving questions raised by those Facebook posts by talking to the member of the commission on Facebook. So, I would like to invite, and this isn't an attack or anything, but Commissioner Bonzel, Commissioner Schlegel have recently made Facebook posts relating to somehow the ad hoc housing committee and a subsection of that relating to a county committee and a subsection of that relating to a transportation survey that I would like some clarification on. Commissioner Lawrence recently made a statement on Facebook thanking a public employee for helping out his mother, and then that was removed, and I'd like to know the resolution of that, considering public employees don't typically go around helping individuals shovel. So, my questions are, during public comment, I would appreciate if these commissioners would expand upon the statements made on Facebook and give at least some clarity as to what their expectation is, because in one case, there was a survey, and I'm not sure exactly who it was directed to, and in another case, there was a thank you that was removed, and I'm not sure the purpose of that post either. So, I'm asking for that. And also, during chief of police time, I really would like to know what you're going to do about the safety of the town when we get marijuana, if you have five minutes. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, hearing none, public comment is closed. We'll move on now to the comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Got some good business taken care of tonight. I know that not everybody is in favor of everything that gets passed, but I think we had some good discussion. I think we're moving forward as a community, and I'm glad to see that. I really want to clarify what Ms. Brum just made some accusations as far as something to do with the Housing Commission ad hoc committee, which was not anything to do with that social media post that I personally posted. It had to do, and I want, I'll finish it up, but I responded to the comment saying that we were looking for city transit feedback and how we felt our community was impacted by our current transit. I can't read it verbatim, but that's what it alluded to. And I didn't mention the fact that it was done in conjunction with the homeless task force that I sit on as appointed by the mayor. Ms. Brum, you were here for that meeting. And then Commissioner Bonzel down there, he sits on it because of his position and his personal career with the county, and he was asked to sit in on that capacity. I hope that you can touch on that, Commissioner, if you feel the need. And I would really like to just point out that, you know, social media is a tool, and it can be used effectively, and it can also be used as a very snarky weapon that tends to make false accusations, and that's what I'm taking it as, because I know Ms. Brum, and I like Ms. Brum, but I don't, and I don't think that she was trying to say that I was doing something under the table or not being transparent, even though that the term was used in her comment. And I think that it's important to know that, you know, we as commissioners, we have a personal life. We have our role here in the community, and I didn't specifically say homeless task force, because when you think of transit and the Marktran transit system that we have right now, and you throw homeless task force on top of Marktran, people are going to think, well, you know, you're looking at, that's the only people that are running on Marktran, are very select groups of people. Now, Marktran does a humongous service for the city in helping us with the transportation, oftentimes with the homeless, because of the room-at-the-end shelter, because of the areas that we have for them to go and be fed in the evenings, and I want to thank Marktran for their efforts. We are in the very, very early stages of looking at the homelessness situation, and I think that transportation is a very, very fair question to ask the community to respond to. That is all that was being done there. And I'm kind of surprised that you weren't able to be a little bit more specific with that, as I look back to my correspondence directly to you, Ms. Brum. Shortly, I'm talking immediately after the one that clarified my comments Tuesday, 8:16 a.m., with a long note of interpretation or explanation to you specifically. I have a phone, 906-362-1922, my cell number. You ever have a question about anything that I'm either posting online that's related to my civic duty or to things that I'm working on, I encourage you to use that number and call me and talk to me about it. I realize it's an election year. I realize that my term is up and that I will be seeking reelection, and that other people are going to be doing the same, and I hope that people will see that I'm being absolutely transparent in my actions, and that, you know, I don't get it. I don't quite understand what the big stink was here. So, giving it way too much time tonight, I want to thank you for your time for clarifying and for bringing it up, Ms. Brum. If you have any further follow-up with me, I'm all access, either on the phone or after this. Feel free to stop over. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Couple of quick hits if I can. Great presentations tonight for the folks that were tuned in and listening to them. Great information from the next century, I guess, that we'll be moving into, and it's very heartening to see people working like that collaboratively, coming together between the city smart zone and the Northerns invent NMU, for example, and what they're doing to make this city into a true technology hub. You know, I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again. The Upper Peninsula is famous for exporting three things. We export wood, rock, and our children. And we export to children because they can't find the jobs that our families sustaining. So, when we look at what the next century will bring, what the world today is bringing, it's talking in large measure, we've got to have a pretty good trade and professional base, but we've also got to have the folks that are working in cyberspace. We've also got to have the folks that are there at the cutting edge, because that's where the world is moving to. And this is an opportunity to get there, and the benefit that will come of it will be to literally all of our children, ultimately to all of us, because after all, they're paying our social security. And if you only have one child, or two child, or three children, remember that they're the ones that will take a vote and decide where they're going to put you when time comes to put you. So, it certainly behooves us to have the very best we can. I am concerned with odor from marijuana and how we deal with it. We've spoken at the commission level here a couple of times on that. My hope is that we'll see something once we can figure out how to do it, do it legally, have it into our nuisance ordinance so that we can take appropriate measures when necessary. We can't ignore that. And whether that's done from a local homeowner growing his own or whether it's part of a business, we need to deal with it. I do hope that Mr. Doyle will take, get with the planning commission and take this the next step. Certainly, I think it needs to be fixed, and we just don't have a mechanism for fixing it. And that becomes a great frustration, I think, when you see something that's wrong, institutionally wrong, and we can't fix it legally. And hopefully, Mr. Doyle can begin to get that process moving with the planning commission. So, my heart goes out to him, and I think all of us feel the same way, that we'd like to see a good outcome there. 6:00 p.m., next, what date is that, Jen? That the Corps will be at the Northern?
19th, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. That'll be 6:00 p.m. in Jammerich 1322. If you're interested in what's happening with water levels, how they're measured, where they think they're going to go, where they think they are, and how they're going to get there, then it's the Corps of Engineers that will be doing a presentation, and those are the folks that arguably manage the water levels in the Great Lakes and are responsible for determining what they truly are. So, it's a rare opportunity. In my memory, they have never been up here and given a program like this, so it's a great opportunity to be there and get it. Lastly, this weekend, UP 200. Great time in Marquette. Come on downtown, watch the dogs run. It's an absolutely unique event in this state, and it's just something that makes Marquette special. So, be there and be part of that special night. Thank you, your honor.
Commissioner Lawrence?
I think that, you know, we might not have gotten everything I wanted through the cannabis ordinance tonight, but I think that's probably a good thing about democracy. You know, if we're up to me individually, I'd put all cannabis retail spots in mixed-use areas all across the city. But, you know, I'm aware that I am representative of a portion of Marquette, as are people who want to tighten it up. So, I think that it's a good start, celebration of compromise, and sometimes that's hard to do. Appreciate the planning commission's work on it. There is nothing, if you have a 300-some-page ordinance, it's going to be a little imperfect at times, and I think that I'm grateful that we've had an active citizen who has acknowledged that we might have had some anomalies and discrepancies in the land development code that would prohibit him from participating in the cannabis ordinance, but it also shows the demand of what we can do with some of these properties, and I really hope, and maybe I will officially move next meeting to make sure that we do look at reverting these properties back to commercial. It's really interesting, because we put them, the planning commission wanted them in multi-use, because it would be presumably more versatile. So, it either tells us that we have something wrong with our land development code amendments or something wrong with our cannabis zoning, so... But I think we'll work on that, and it's good to have all these different perspectives coming at the table, and I'm happy that we passed the Elliott Larson recommendation from Mayor Smith. I think that'll be positive for the state, so I would watch that on the ballot next year. Other than that, I don't wish to address my social media postings, but I will say that I was referring to a situation that my mother had a good encounter with the Department of Public Works. She was shoveling her in front of her mailbox, and at the time, happenstance occurred that a city plow was hugging up right next to her, and then also got, did a great job next to my neighbors' mailboxes, too. So, no one shoveled from my mother. They didn't even know it was my mother. It wasn't even my property, so... I think celebrating public works is pretty good. They've been, they've been pretty awesome in the past couple of weeks. When we don't have a lot of snow, they're able to hug tight curbs, and I know that there's probably some mailboxes that need work, but I've noticed an incredible job by the Department of Public Works, so that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you. Another great meeting, got a lot of stuff done. I think the thing with Third Street with the marijuana stuff might be is, you know, there's the back end, you know, by the end of Third Street, the northern, not a lot of people live down there, a lot of commercial. Maybe that's why they're going for the, in the middle, though I think I see a problem with that, there's a lot of residential in the middle, plus the school system right there. Now, I know there's, you know, a place on Third Street that sell booze, and there's bars, but the bars aren't going until late at night, and the school system is done by then. So, a lot of problems with cannabis in the middle of Third Street could be the school system right nearby there, you know, but, so that's, planning commission working very hard on that, so that's a lot of stuff they have to work on. As far as Commissioner Schlegel's post, I saw something about that, and I mentioned that a dude was talking about, because I raised a question last time we were down at a conference, I think down in Grand Rapids, about transit around the community, because I know Marktran's been talked about before, some people like it, some people don't, and one of the planning commissioners, who is handicapped, said that he has a hard time getting around town sometimes, because handicap accessibility is not very well. He has to reserve ahead of time, and they only do it at certain times, and so forth and so on. So, I mentioned that when we took a little tour on Grand Rapids. They said, it's a place that they have buses around Grand Rapids that are paid for by Grand Valley, which is a school down there, kind of like Northern, and they chipped into funds of it, and they have a separate bus system that runs in certain sections, like one bus goes around one area, a bus goes to the other area. So, basically, one bus would go like from NMU to downtown, then from downtown to like Harlow Park or the hospital or something like that, examples. So, that's stuff working on. And so, I understood the question very well. As far as some of the comments in the audience, Mr. Verito said, "No updates on glass? Well, all I see is a call landfill, and they'll be more than happy to give you updates on glass." They're not really recycling it, but they are crushing it and then giving it to the Market County Road Commission. The road commission is then recycling it and using it as material for the land, for the roads. It's been popular before, been used in a lot of places, and I asked, as you get permits, they said yes. First thing what the landfill did is they asked the county and the state if it's okay to do that, because being an construction industry, I know what they're, anything to do with gravel or roads has to pass states first, so I understood that very much, and they said, yep, all permits are gone. The state said, okay. So, now, the city can use it, too. If the city has lots of glass, it gets crushed, and then gets mixed in with the rock and get reused, so it won't get taken up in landfill anymore. It'd be reused in roads, which is good for them. As far as power plants go, I mean, we don't get updates either. They're not city-owned. We Energy is in BLP, control the two power plants, and we've had updates, We Energy have talked about it, they talked about it at our last meeting, one of the meetings they give updates, they're working on it. But, you know, it's a little big process, and it's not an easy job to do, so they're working on it, and they'll just talk about it when it's happening. And as far as, like Commissioner Somerhal said, shipping people downstate, we know that. A friend of mine went to school up here with me and worked for BLP, and he just got moved downstate, he's an engineer, and got moved downstate for a better job. Took his family with him, so just something like that, moving people out of town. So, I mean, Lake Shore, we all know Lake Shore's been beaten up for years. When Bill Vida was around, he was concerned about it, talked about it a lot, but the problem was funding. The city finally got funding for it, was paid for some grants, and found... The city finally got funding for it, was paid for some grants, and finally able to take care of it. It's not just because we want to fix the road. We didn't care about the beach, because our beaches are slowly evaporating, but it's because of the high water levels. But, the other areas, they doubled, I know where my parents go, a lot of people from the Midwest go, in Florida, they said, okay, our beach erosion is going to be a problem eventually with hurricanes and erosion. So, they tripled the size of their beach, but to do that, people were not very fond of. They pumped all the sand from the ocean, they used bulldozers and tractors for years, made sand dunes, which the city's going to start making sand dunes where the existing road right now is, and pumped it and made it all better. They tripled the size of their beach, but helped with the erosion, so it's something the city's working on. We finally got funding to do it. I credit Mike Ansley for doing a good job on that. I mean, we've not been ignoring it, but the problem is funding. If we had money back in the day, our planning manager Gary would have said, hey, I got money, we can do it, you know. But, we have no funding, you know, as city core engineers, we come here and talk about lake levels, which is great, but from what Mike Ansley has figured out, they are partly blamed for reconfiguring the lake flow by building the Prescott Breakwall, which we know had to be done, but therefore created a different flow of water and created a lot of problems around the lake and ruined a lot of the beach. I remember when I was a kid, the pond in front of the, we are just, it was called the Hot Pond, we'd float down there in tubes and have fun, big beach. People got in trouble, there was bad air controls there, and then the beach closed, and the beach is almost gone now. And South Beach is getting worn down, too. So, lake levels are going down, and we do what we can to help and make good, so.
Commissioner Bonzel.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I guess, just to respond to some of the concerns about public transit and the Homelessness Task Force, I'll be brief, but the Homelessness Task Force is just a group of stakeholders from throughout the county, local units of government, nonprofit organizations that serve the homeless, businesses, various other organizations, which is coming together to try and make some, it doesn't have any power to do anything unilaterally. The goal of the Homelessness Task Force is to make recommendations to local organizations and units of government to hopefully end homelessness in Marquette County. And this informal working group on public transit involving myself, Commissioner Schlegel, and a couple other folks who have experience and knowledge regarding planning, downtown development, transit, homelessness, sort of spun off of that. And this working group is completely unofficial. It's not related in any way to the new city ad hoc housing committee. It's just some local leaders talking very informally about the issue of public transit and homelessness, and certainly does not have any actual power to do anything. I do hope that the city takes action, starting this year, in concert with Marktran, to improve public transit in the city of Marquette. But, that's really all there is to it. I just want to note that I also did respond in a pretty detailed way to Ms. Brum's comment on Facebook, and also included some additional information on transit, which I think anybody who's interested in transit would find very interesting. But, please do feel free to contact me. Personal cell number is 906-236-0247. Call me, text me if you have any questions or concerns about public transit, or the Homelessness Task Force, or anything for that matter. Finally, I just want to say that I think any suggestion that Commissioner Lawrence was using his position to get any special treatment or favors from city staff is clearly very inaccurate and frankly irresponsible. And I agree with Commissioner Lawrence that all the great work being done by the Department of Public Works around the city should be celebrated and not used to make political hay in an election year. Throughout tonight's meeting, I was reminded of a quote by President Kennedy, "Change is the law of life," he said, "and those who look only to the past or the present are certain to miss the future." Change is not easy, and we can either just let it happen to us, or we can make it happen. And I'm glad that tonight we chose to do the latter. Tonight, we sworn in four new members of the Ad Hoc Housing Committee. We also legalized marijuana businesses in the city of Marquette and voted to approve a resolution in support of the Fair and Equal Michigan Ballot Initiative, which in past will ensure that the legal protections of the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act are extended to include sexual orientation and gender identity. Finally, we tasked our consultants with, in the consent agenda, with providing an update to the Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Utility Financial Plan, as it's become clear that many people in Marquette cannot afford any more double-digit utility rate increases. These actions are grounded in a vision of a more prosperous and equitable future for all Marquette residents. And they're a great example of how we can make progress, even on very complicated and contentious issues, if we reject the false choices that too often prevent progress. Our community can continue to have a beautiful historic downtown and be a great place to raise a family and allow marijuana businesses. Our community can respect all the rights currently enjoyed by many city residents and extend those same rights to our LGBTQ neighbors. We can maintain our infrastructure without overburdening residents with large utility rate increases that they can't afford, and we can have healthy, family-friendly neighborhoods and a community where everyone can afford a decent place to live. Because if we only look to the past or the present, and we, if we reject change and remain the prisoners of these false choices, then we're inevitably going to miss out on a brighter future. Speaking of housing, I did just want to thank my colleagues, my new colleagues on the Ad Hoc Housing Committee, who we welcomed to the committee at the beginning of tonight's meeting. I want to thank them for serving our community and helping to address this vitally important issue of housing affordability, and I'm looking forward to working with them. And just want to thank everyone who attended tonight's meeting and all of our viewers online and on TV. Thank you. And I'm looking forward to seeing you all downtown at the UP 200 on Friday night.
All right. For my comments tonight, I just want to speak on the process by which we made some of these important decisions that my colleagues have referenced tonight. I think it's very important to understand that our committees handle a lot of the thinking through work, and those folks are volunteers for a large part. There's one committee that I'm aware of that by state law has, folks are paid, but the other folks are serving as volunteers in their community, and we're getting, and there's vacancies on many of these committees, so there's every opportunity to be part of these conversations. And I encourage everyone, I was on the Public Art Task Force several years ago, it was one of the things that I started on, and I've served on other committees in other communities that I've lived on. And so, working up through that process from the, from literally the residents and businesses and other stakeholders to come, then it comes to us, we're sort of, you know, the buck, the buck stops here, and I'm honored to be part of this group of people that think so carefully about these important topics. And in particular, I want to say that I wanted to, in voting no on the amendment for T4, T5, I wanted to honor the Planning Commission's compromise, and let's, I know they spent a lot of time on that, and let's move, we do have built-in a way to revisit it, as we've revisited some other things in the past, and I think that we'll have an opportunity to see how this all plays out here in the next few months and over the next year. I have two, or three announcements. As folks have said, it's the UP sled dog race this weekend, one of my favorite things. And the Downtown Development Authority is offering complimentary parking on Friday throughout downtown Marquette. There will be no need to pay at downtown parking meters, pay stations, and the time limits in MDDA-operated lots are suspended. However, loading zones, handicap parking spots, and any other related restrictions will still be in place, so come on down. And coming up, the last thing I want to mention is we do have several voting opportunities to learn more about voting in this important election year. This coming Thursday morning, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, here downstairs in City Hall in the Senior Center, there's going to be an election and voter forum. And if you're available in the morning, on Thursday morning, please come. You'll get to hear directly from our, the Senior Center, the clerk staff, and you have the opportunity, we have, in Michigan, we've made it easier to vote absentee, because sometimes it can be hard to get to polls on that very day. And so, you can actually vote for president right now in Michigan. And we are going to have a presentation on how things are going for voting here in the city of Marquette at our next city commission meeting. And that's building towards where this Monday, then, is President's Day, celebrating the fact that we get to choose our leaders in this country. And then I also just want to say that this presentation coming up on Wednesday, next week Wednesday, the 19th, with the Army Corps, is going to be very important to considering our future, and I hope as many people can be there. They've also announced they're going to livestream it on Facebook. If you search on Michigan Seagrant Marquette Lake Levels Presentation, you'll be able to find that if you're on Facebook, and I'm sure it'll probably be on their Michigan Seagrant website as well. City Manager.
Thank you. First of all, Commissioners, thank you again for your continued support in helping us get our work done here in the city. I will be having open office hours this Wednesday, the 12th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Peter White Public Library, for anybody that might be interested. And Margaret, wake up. The, Blake will, the police chief will talk to you after the meeting and answer your questions for you. And I wanted to just, I don't want to continue the mailbox saga, but I'm, for one, as a manager, am quite happy that one of my employees might have saw somebody who might have been in need of some assistance and stopped to help. I'm sure that driver had no idea who they were helping, but I'd rather field those kind of questions than ones that they just kept on going and didn't help anybody. So, that's my perspective. And lastly, with President's Day next Monday, we will be, City Hall and all city services will be closed except for essential services. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned at 8:01 p.m.